I don't know.
Capron?
Here.
Redkin?
Here.
Moore? Scott?
Here.
Waters.
I move we go into closed session. The City Council will discuss a purchase or sale of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be likely, or reasonably expected to increase the price the city would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the city would receive for that property.
Second?
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
I move we go into closed session. The City Council will discuss fragile matters relating to employment positions of employees of city covered by the collective bargaining agreement with the city manager.
Second?
Moore? Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Oh, come on. Who brought you?
Uh-oh. I did.
Pardon me?
I did.
Got a new phone?
Just...
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Redkin?
Redkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Got an email. You know.
Capron.
Yeah, well, I'm.
Redkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the lead.
Yeah. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to the strategic plan quarterly update. I'm sorry, we'll go to parking, Skywalk Board of Trustees interview with Jeff Lamori, I'm sorry. Come on up, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Yep, I'm Jeff Lamori, I'm the Facilities Director at Mercy Medical Center. Really, my interest in serving on this is we do take up a lot of, lot of space downtown here and it'd be nice to be able to let us have our say in what happens with the Skywalk and the street side parking and stuff like that. Yeah, I guess that's, that's really what it lies, yep.
Questions?
Jeff, you mentioned in your application that you would like to see some system and Skywalk system improvements, do you have anything specific in mind?
It's just more making sure the Skywalks are cleaned up, I know that you guys have made a lot of headway in the last year, I see that going to work every day, I see a huge difference, I'd like to see that continued as I have kids and, and like to take them, that, that was something I liked doing as a kid with my parents, be able to go through there and make it a safe place for that. And that's really where my interest lies in there, plus being able with all the downtown partners that are attached to that, so we have a lot of staff that take lunch breaks, be able to be, feel safe to go through there and to go to those people in the winter months.
Thanks for applying.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Now we'll go to the strategic plan.
Jessica Johnson with the City Manager's Office, and I'll be giving you an update on the last quarter of 2018. Our current strategic plan has four strategic focus areas which are to grow Sioux City, promote Sioux City, enhance connectivity with citizens and businesses, instill Sioux City pride. The first I'm going to discuss is grow Sioux City, and part of that is increasing housing opportunities. A ribbon cutting was hosted this fall for the first 12 units in the Chestnut Hill Development. The development will include 88 new townhomes when it's fully built. Several other significant residential projects are currently underway that will produce over 250 new housing units over the next five years. Northern Valley Crossing is seeing growth as well, three new developments, an Aldi's grocery store, a Dollar Tree store, and a Burger King restaurant are expected to begin construction this year. And after decades of efforts, the ribbon was cut this fall on the last section of the new four lane Highway 20 across Iowa. The long awaited transportation improvement will help bring new economic growth for many years to come. Kaiser Refrigeration, Midstates Utility, and Seaboard Triumph Foods were both presented with growing Sioux City awards in October. Both businesses were recognized for their significant growth, investment, and commitment to Sioux City. Construction finished on the new fire themed splash pad located just to the north of the current Rose Hill Park. A ribbon cutting event will take place in the spring. Construction on the West 7th Street reconstruction project continued. The second and final phase included complete reconstruction of West 7th Street between Sioux Street and Hamilton Boulevard, and a ribbon cutting celebrating the completion of the Pierce Street reconstruction project between 27th and 29th Streets was held in December. Several positive projects were announced are underway or were completed in 2018 that will help continue the positive momentum and progress towards a revitalized and vibrant downtown Sioux City. Marto Brewing Company announced plans to move into the Promenade Cinnamon Building. A new co-working space in the Ho-Chuck Center, Nucleus, opened its doors in October, and a ribbon cutting was hosted in November for the recently renovated Aberdeen Apartments. With the support of the city, the renovation of the historic Warrior Davidson Buildings downtown received an initial award of $11.3 million in historic tax credits. Virginia Square will see two new mixed use buildings in 2019. The Sulland Expo Center design is now complete, and bidding is scheduled to take place in March with construction set to begin this spring. And construction continues at the Sioux City Convention Center, construction is scheduled to be completed this fall. A week of events relating to innovation and entrepreneurship took place in November as part of the sixth annual launch week. The week provides opportunities for students, entrepreneurs, and business professionals to participate in workshops, business competitions, and networking. Our second strategic focus area is to promote Sioux City, and we do that with increased recreational opportunities, continued development of our public spaces, and enhancing local arts and cultural amenities. A ribbon cutting and public open house was held for the newly constructed Gilcrest Learning Center in December. The art center is currently undergoing renovations as well, and they are expected to be completed this spring. The $1.2 million renovation of the Sioux City Public Library's morning side brand began in October. The floor plan is being revamped to feature a more defined computer lab, kitchenette, a small study room, and an expanded children's area. The Friends of the Library hosted their first ever holiday book sale in November. Proceeds from that will fund various activities and programs for the Sioux City Public Library. Trail users now have seven miles of continuous trail from the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Trail to River Drive. The Big Sioux River Trail segment was completed in November. A ribbon cutting was held for Prairie Park located at 3500 South Lewis Boulevard in October. The new park features a unique park shelter with a living green roof. And fall did not have a shortage of fun activities for everyone in Sioux City. A Halloween Monster Dash 5K was held at Cone Park in October. A breakfast for Santa event was held in November, and a parent's night out and a holiday family fun night were both held in December at the Long Lines Family Rec Center. The NAIA Women's Volleyball National Championship returned to the Tyson Event Center in November, and in October, more than 20 venues around Sioux City hosted events celebrating fall during the 2018 Fall Fest. It included two days of fun designed for residents and visitors to enjoy the fall season and showcased Sioux City attractions. Downtown partners kicked off the holiday season with an evening full of activities for the entire family at their annual Downtown for the Holidays event on November 19th. Visitors to the Tyson Event Center will now have a new and improved concessions experience. Five concession stands at the arena were refurbished last quarter. Next steps include revamping the menus and adding more local items where possible. The Parks and Recreation Department and Wells Enterprises hosted a ribbon cutting for the newest addition to Cone Park on December 21st. The new Blue Bunny Hill is designed for all ages but is a hit with the little ones, it is located next to the main tubing hill. Our third focus area is enhance connectivity with citizens and businesses. Sioux City Fire Rescue is helping to do that with a new program called Neighborhood Fire Department. The purpose of the program is to engage the local fire stations with their respective neighborhoods with outreach, safety, and education. Sioux City Fire Rescue also started the Sioux City Fire Ready Marketing Campaign last fall. The campaign is intended to educate the public on the department and to show what Sioux City Fire Rescue does during non-emergency times to prepare for the real emergencies. The City of Sioux City was a proud recipient of $4.1 million in U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Lead-Based Paint Hazard Reduction Program funding last quarter. The funds received will be used to make improvements to at least 160 homes within Sioux City. The first Northwest Iowa STEM Festival was held on November 8th at Makerspace Sioux City. The free event allowed participants to learn about area businesses and organizations, over 20 exhibitors were on hand. The Sioux City Economic Development Department hosted a Business for Breakfast event in December. The breakfast served as a networking and learning opportunity for local business professionals and entrepreneurs. City Civil Engineer Brett Langley and Environmental Services Analyst Melissa Campbell assisted students in an engineering, design, and development course through the Sioux City Community School District's Career Academy last quarter. The staff served as experts in the field offering feedback on projects related to possible engineering solutions to real world problems. A holiday tradition with the Sioux City Police Department continued with the annual Shop with a Cop event this Christmas. Officers teamed up with underprivileged families at local retailers and provided funds to children to purchase gifts for their families. The Employee Advisory Committee used Jeans for Worthy Cause donations from city employees in December to adopt two deserving families in Sioux City. The funds were used to purchase Christmas gifts for the families, winter outerwear, and household items. Employees also donated food items, toiletries, blankets, clothing. And our fourth and final focus area is instill Sioux City pride, and we are definitely proud of the USS Sioux City, which was officially commissioned on November 17th, 2018 in Annapolis, Maryland. More than 5,000 people were in attendance at the commissioning ceremony. In celebration of Universal Human Rights Day, the Sioux City Human Rights Commission hosted an award ceremony honoring local individuals and organizations for outstanding public service. The 2018 War Eagle Human Rights Award honorees were the Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, Carolyn and Mike Goodwin, and Dr. Richard Lund. The first of several new recycling receptacles downtown were placed at the corner of 4th and Nebraska Streets. More installations will be forthcoming this winter. A total of 223 trees and 60 shrubs were planted along Prairie Creek, the riverfront, and other locations throughout Sioux City. The project was completed in conjunction with the Army Corps of Engineers in an effort to preserve our natural resources and beautify our city. And finally, environmental services staff coordinated a certification opportunity for contractors to become certified in site pollution prevention. The eight-hour course was attended by 33 contractors from the region. So as you can see, we had a busy end to 2018. Any questions?
Another outstanding quarter.
Yeah.
Really was for the city and for its citizens.
Thanks Jessica for putting, putting it together. I know it's a lot of work, but that's a good thing.
Yes, it's good that we have enough going on, that it'll work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll go to the 2019 quarterly financial reports.
Mayor Council, this is for the quarter ending December 31st, 2018.
Mayor, Council, this is for the quarter ending December 31st, 2018. And looking at the major revenues, a few notes of interest is that the Red Flex Camera, we have $1.3 million worth of speed camera funds that were not budgeted, but that money is now being programmed into FY '20 CIP. The casino in FY '18 was short $125,000 that received this year as their guarantee payment to get us up to $2.1 million, so that's included in this quarter's data. And then on our sales tax, our reconciliation payment, which they take and pay us estimates through the year, and then once a year they do reconciliation in November, we collect an additional $494,000 worth of sales tax. So those were all very good items. The sewer fund is up in their budget. It takes about 18% of our revenues right now, but we have a $2.7 million receivable that is questionable whether we will be collecting that or not in one of our major industrials. In our expenditures, our debt service usually is a lot larger, but because we only pay interest in December, that only represented 4% of total expenditures, where in June then it would be a much greater percentage. Our personnel services are running true to how our budget is at 57%. Our miscellaneous includes us funding our deficit for the previous fiscal year for the Spectra operation. On our department expenditures, most departments are running within or below their budget for the two quarters. We have a few exceptions. We have, in community development, we have grant expenditures that were not budgeted because they roll over from the previous year, so they're not included in the budget that we were spending. The events facility, we have the subsidy payment that we were making up for last year that's included. And you can see, when you look at the 18 actuals, you can see this was under our operation versus a contract operation. And then we have, for WIC IT, they're exceeding, but they've also paid their annual software maintenance fees early this year. On investments, the interest rates are starting to come out. This is a distribution of where our investments are currently sitting. Last year, at this time, we were earning about 0.91% on our investments. This year, we're running at 1.34%. So interest rates are slowly starting to rise on our investments. On the EMS division, this is looking at it from a fiscal year perspective. If we were to look at it on a calendar year perspective, we lost for the calendar year of '18 $875,000, but we do show a receivable of $840,000. Whether we are going to collect all that or not is still in debate. As the year goes proceeds, we'll be able to see what our write-off percentages are. But looking at year-to-date in the fiscal year for six months, we've lost $318,000 with a $200,000 receivable for a net of $117,000. Included in November, the reason the expenses are higher is that was a three-page act month, so there's three pays in that. And in December, we paid their liability insurance. So that's why those expenses are up a little bit.
Under, when you do your audit, will they go back and pick up those receivables and know what they are?
Yes.
So you'll know exactly where you came in at?
Yes.
Should by now?
We do, but the problem you've got is those receivables, the $840,000 worth of receivables at June 30th. A lot of those, if you look at especially August on the revenues, you can see we're starting to collect some of those contractual obligations that were being held up and we're slow. Right now, our biggest slow pays are Title 19 and veterans. Those are being extremely slow pays, so we've still got a lot of those out there that belong to last year. The normal pays are doing really well, and they're staying pretty current on those. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the consent agenda today. That's Items 4 through 14D. Consider them to pass unanimously. If you want to speak on any of these items, please come up as I read the number. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns, and remember to give your name and address no matter when you come to the microphone and I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
Four is a reading of the City Councilments of June 30th, February 2nd, and February 4th. Five is the appointing Kerry Radloff to the Environmental Advisory Board for a three-year term. Count the waves of policy that no person can serve more than two consecutive terms. Six is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Gov Connection for five Dell Power Edge servers. Got him back on this one. Seven's actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a grant with the Federal Home Loan Bank for housing program funds. B is a resolution accepting the Housing Trust Fund Grant from the IFA. C is a resolution authorizing an application for a Wellmark Foundation Matching Grant for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Redevelopment. Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Lewis and Clark Parking Lot Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the 2018 Resurfacing Project Phase Two. C is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the 2020 Resurfacing Project Phase One. D is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the 2020 Resurfacing Project Phase Two.
Mayor, I have a question for Gordon, if I may, please. There may be a comment. This is in line with the mayor and council's direction to start doing something with our streets, correct? Making the improvements?
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. Yes, it is.
You know, and I kind of went through, you went through all of the streets and kind of did your priority.
Well, some of it I inherited from the previous CIPs and from maintenances, recommendations, and what they'd like to see done also.
And this is what you're proposing, which I appreciate. I appreciate that you got right on this to have this before council. So like on 8B, I just outlined the streets that you're doing. West 4th Street from Wesley Way to Market Street. West 2nd Street from George Street to West Street. And then Collins Street from West 5th Street to West 6th Street. Under 8C, you're proposing Douglas Street from 3rd Street to 6th. And Douglas Street from 8th to 18th. And then 8th Street from Douglas Street to Pearl Street. And 14th Street from Douglas Street to Pierce Street. Under 8D, we're out at Stone Park Boulevard from Hamilton to Pierce. And then 5th Street from Pierce Street to Jennings. And 11th Street from Jackson to Floyd. And 14th Street from Jackson to Main Street. And I think all of those are in need of repair, resurfacing. And I just want to point this out because it's going to come up later on our agenda. The seniors advisory committee, in their top 10 action items, that was number one, to start doing street improvements, resurfacing, making our streets a lot better than what we have now. So I just want to thank you. I mean, this is really a good start of what we have to do and what we want to do. And so I appreciate that you and your staff took the time to put these in priority. And there are going to be people that are going to probably call or email me and say, "Well, we got streets here that are a lot worse condition or as bad," but we'll get to those. I mean, you got to start somewhere, and we're doing that here and now. So I just want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon.
Nine are actions relating to bond. A is a resolution electing procedures for bond projects. Item 9 to B through E are resolutions scheduling to issue GO bonds not to exceed various amounts. Please come forward if you have any questions. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract at Grunman-Hick for the Zenith Water Treatment Plan Improvement.
I had a question. Mark, I was just curious if there was any idea why the bids came in higher than kind of what we're estimating?
Sure.
Timing or what your idea was?
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Mark Sims, Utilities Director. Brad couldn't be here tonight, but my understanding is that the electoral portion of the bids was much higher than was expected, and so that drove electrical. Would you have Ethan Joy here from JEO Consulting if you have specific questions?
And did you see that across all of the different bids, that that's kind of the line item or the area where they were coming in higher?
Did you say that's true?
Yes.
B is a resolution approving a contract at KP for the Martin Building areaway improvements.
Gordon, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask about that one as well. Mark had an answer. Do you have an answer of why we think they came in around 15% higher than what we were estimating?
Could you repeat that? Why what?
Why they came in 15%? Both of them were more than 15. While the one we're accepting is 15%, the other one was more. If there was any specific line item or area of why they were coming in higher?
We did check both bids from the two contractors, and there was nothing that stood out that said it was this or that. So I can't explain it, why it went over.
I just want to know, I mean, as far as when we bid these or what's going on of why they would come in, as far as when we were working on them or bidding them out?
I was disappointed that only two bid on it, but I think part of the problem was bidding it after, over Christmas and the holiday is when we had those out.
Gordon, I was curious, just out of curiosity for no other reason, but the mobilization is at $119,000. What makes it so hard to get everything there they need to do?
Part of it's traffic control that I could see personally, and I think they probably buried some costs in there, but you can't get
Traffic control's got a separate
No, no, I understand. But I mean, just getting it, getting there and getting all the stuff ordered, getting the GEO foam ordered, organizing it for that one. I really don't have an explanation.
But that seems normal, I guess.
It can be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've seen them higher
All right.
For mobilization costs.
Thank you. I just thought it looked really high for some reason.
I did question a lot of them, a lot of the different things. That one, I didn't. I didn't even really see that one.
The figures, I'd find something nobody else cared about.
I know. Thank you for pointing me at
Thanks, Gordon.
He is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Nice from Electric for electrical upgrades for the Riverside Family Aquatic Center. Eleven are actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to sell the north one-half of the vacated Darling Avenue. Petitioner Alan C. Walson. B is a resolution proposing to sell the north one-half of the vacated alley at 916 Martha. Petitioners Donald C. Walson. Three are resolutions inviting proposals for the electric transmission line easement and announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Mid-America Property at 3,100 South Lewis Boulevard.
I had some questions about that one. Jeff, I was just wondering about, as far as the removal of those trees and repurposing them, I think I actually spoke with Matt or maybe it was someone down at Wastewater, and they were looking at whether they could put those at Prairie Park as far as in the water itself or habitat or anything. Had there been discussion about that?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. I'm not familiar with those discussions. I know a lot of these trees do have the wilting disease, and so it's just a matter of time before they need to be replaced. So as part of the easement, Mid-American is paying the City of Sioux City $67,000 to remove and replace those trees. There's approximately 67 trees located along this north-south corridor. As far as any type of reuse of those trees, I'd have to defer to either Matt or Kelly on if they could be mulched or if they could be used in the Prairie Park, but I'll leave it up to those folks. Or Mark?
I could speak to some of that. I believe Kelly has used some of those in the lagoons out there, the former lagoons out there.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to remember, making sure
And I know some of them are already in bad shape or dead.
Yeah, as long as someone was talking about it, because I remember
Yes, I'm sure he, yeah, I think he's already done that.
And is this along the roadway as well? It's those trees, right?
Kind of along the fence line between the road and the fence.
Because then on the inside or on the treatment plant side, past the taller evergreens, there's another row of them. Are those the new ones or are those being moved well?
Some are new. It depends on how close we are to that
They're pretty small. I mean, they're pretty new.
Mm-hmm.
Those are
I think he's already
Fang, right? They're
Great.
Thanks.
Four approved total checks issued for the reporting period January 2018. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Fourteen's receipt a minute. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? They passed 5-0. Fifteen's a hearing in ordinance vacating a portion of Riverside Park. BNZ recommends approval for consideration. Pass February 4th, 2019. I'll move second reading.
Second.
We get any answers why they need this much?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. We did reach out to the Iowa DOT in response of the first reading. The response received from DOT is that they need the property to grade within the ditch to allow for stormwater drainage and also install a fence is the reason that the DOT has provided to us. If you look at the topography, I know it's tough on this map, but there's actually in the center line of that property, there is a natural swale that runs along Riverside Boulevard, and then it starts heading down the interstate, and they're stating that they need that for additional grading and for the use of the ditch. Following the grading, they'll be installing a new fence along that entire corridor.
Do the DOT pay for the land?
As of right now, the Interstate 29 Agreement with the Iowa DOT and the City of Sioux City says they will not pay for right-of-way needed for the Interstate 29 project, except for parkland. This is parkland, and so I feel that we have a ground to be able to charge them per square foot, and we'll see how far we can take that. But it's very specific in the agreement that we read that it says, "except parkland."
So why don't we get some money before we can give it to them?
We will try. This is the vacation process. This is not the sale. And so as we move forward towards the sale, we can bring that up to their
They have, if they have land that they're not going to use when their project's done, they act on
We are in discussions with them along the entire corridor, and there'll be some lengthy discussions regarding the property.
There is that possibility.
There is. And we've started those.
Second reading, correct.
Passes 5-0. Does anybody want to do third reading today? No? Okay. Sixteen's a hearing resolution accepting the proposal of Nuno Real Estate for land in the Rose Hill Urban Renewal Area, the property at 1312 Grandview Boulevard. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes 5 to 1. Mr. Gretchen voted no. Seventeen's an ordinance amending Chapter 5.20, increasing the fees for solid waste collections. Move first reading.
Second.
City Attorney, would you like to give a little background on senior citizen discounts, please?
Sure. In August of 2016, the state auditor released an opinion pertaining to the City of Cascade, Iowa regarding their senior discounts. They basically said that they could no longer continue with the senior discount plan, or that was the advice that they were giving. That's been brought to the council for consideration. There's been research across the state to determine what cities, if any, are still granting a senior discount, and the larger ones that I looked at, and Melissa Campbell may be able to give additional background as well, but I couldn't and the larger ones that I looked at, Melissa Campbell may be able to give additional background as well, but I couldn't find any that currently give a senior discount. Some give low income discount rate through kind of a lengthy application process and income verification. But as far as a senior discount, that isn't widely used if at all.
Okay, so my question is if, what's the difference between low income and senior citizen? Because a lot of senior citizens are on low income.
Sure. It would have to meet the state definition of low income. Some of the other cities I looked at, for example, Iowa City, they have a website that you can take a look at that gives the application information and comes then verified through a third-party source to determine if they meet the state guidelines for what constitutes low income. That's more complicated that I can probably give background on, on today. But you have to meet a certain threshold of income per year to qualify for that, not just based on age.
So who'd you say gave the opinion?
The state auditor.
State auditor.
This applies to all city utilities.
Correct. City-operated utilities.
That's still being looked at? Because I noticed in the RCA it says staff has determined Iowa law may prohibit providing.
This is an opinion that's been given by the state auditor. I think it's something that the council should give great consideration to and follow that recommendation. My recommendation to the council is to, unfortunately, no one wants to do away with the senior discount. I understand that. I understand that's something. But unfortunately, I think it's the one that needs to be taken in order to ensure that we're in compliance with state law.
I think it's a type of deal, Mr. Gretkin, that we could, we could maybe continue to do it, but it isn't right. I mean, it's not legal and it's just a matter of time before somebody would challenge the city on that in a class action type thing. And it just wouldn't, it, it just wouldn't, it'd be too costly to do that.
That's why I wonder if anybody was in the process of doing that now, but.
Not, not that we're aware of.
I.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I know and I'm sure everybody on the council probably had a call or two, but I ran into a gentleman at the post office this morning that was concerned about it for, we talked for about a half an hour and, and I know we all got a letter today too from, from, and you talked about low income, but also, you know, seniors who are on fixed incomes and, and it's, it would be nice, but clearly I understand if it's not legal, we, we can't endorse it.
And in the seniors advisory committee, their top ten, number one was streets, number two, discounts. And now we're, we're losing the discount. And, and I've, I've responded to a couple of emails and I said if, if it were not or whether it's legal or not.
Yes.
I would be in favor of retaining them. I think we all are.
Yeah, we would.
I don't know if we could make it work with, with the low income nature, because that would be similar to what we do with property taxes, I think, isn't it? Why for a low.
It'd be under twenty-one thousand and I would qualify for that. And you're senior and you have to, or disabled.
Oh, for the property tax, okay. But it is, it's unpopular, that's for sure, because it was through the senior advisory committee that I realized I could sign up for those. So I just signed up last year and now we're, we're losing it. I mean, it's.
That's what happened. That was the threshold.
I didn't do.
It's about four dollars a month, isn't it? It's about, it's about fifty bucks.
Here, did you sign up for it?
About fifty bucks a year and that's.
Yeah, when you're on a limited income, it's.
Bingo. You're exactly right.
And then plus you're talking about the increase on top of that.
Well, the, we need to, I need to clarify that for myself about that increase on top of that. That's, that was already, pardon.
It's wordage in the contract.
Right. That's, that's in the contract, but you're right, it's a double. You got the two percent increase and then you're taking away the discount.
Is this on?
Yeah, we need your name and address. I shouldn't be having this dialogue with you, but I, you're responding, so.
I know, I'm sorry. Keith Baker, twenty-one oh one Nash Street, Sioux City. On this rate increase, you know, when I go around town, you know, his manpower is cut back about two-thirds on a lot of these pickup trucks. I don't know what he has turned in for his overhead, but he's cutting back a lot of his overhead. I don't know if he's turned that into you guys or not. Plus, he's not paying two-thirds of the, of the crews that he used to have. Plus, he doesn't have all these incentive programs he don't have to pay for. So his cost is down. Has they, has he reported that to you guys?
I, I think.
Well, has he reported it to you? Because you know, you know more than we do. So where'd you get your information?
Well.
I see it.
But overall, generally, to answer your question.
They used to have three guys on each, don't shake your head, ma'am. He used to have three guys on every garbage truck. Now he's down to one because he's got that arm truck. He's just got rid of two guys off most of the trucks. There goes part of your overhead.
I think you're, I think the point you're raising, I think the points you're raising are.
So is it a justifiable increase? Excuse me, sir.
But, yeah, but, well, excuse me for interrupting you, but, but I think that the increase is built into the contract, but I think those are factors that we need to look at for the next contract renewal because they're built in. So it would be, the contract doesn't probably provide that if any of those factors change, then the increase wouldn't be there. I think that's built in.
Yeah.
But you raised some good points about what we need to look at when it comes time for contract renewal.
Which will, which will be next year, in case you didn't know that.
Isn't that about accurate? Isn't that about the way that works?
Correct, yes.
You know, another issue on this senior discount, I talked to some of the other cities today, what they were doing, and they've actually worked into a limited income program. Instead of eliminating the senior discount right away, why don't you milk the city into that kind of program instead of just jerking it from us?
Well, I think that's what we're going to be looking.
And that would save you any sort of a class action suit. Something to think about.
Well, two, two things to think about and, and what I'm recommending, I, I only want to do a first reading at the most today so that we'll have time to sort that out in the next couple of weeks. We don't have a meeting a week from today. Because it's President's Day, but, but in two weeks then we'd have the second and third reading. So I think we'll take that into consideration and look at what options are available.
Yeah, because these other cities say they have, you know, they lost their senior citizen discount and now they've got a program where they have low income programs through the city, not the state. They've developed their own program, their own limited income program. So if you qualify through the city, that's the programs they have. So instead of just jerking it, like I say, kind of, kind of wean yourself into it, you know?
Another, another option that I had thought of, I talked with, like Pete said, I talked with a lot of folks in the community as well today that were reaching out via email or via phone call. And one of the things that they mentioned especially, senior citizens, was that they're hardly using any garbage. You know, is that they really, if they're living alone or maybe a couple, you know, that they're really hardly using any garbage to warrant an increase or the same amount as maybe people that are supporting a family or a household. I obviously have not been serving for a long time and so I would need to be brought up to speed. Have we ever used different sizes of containers? Because I, then I was speaking with Taylor Goodman of the Taxpayers Research Council and we looked at other communities that have graduated bins, you know, smaller ones, ninety gallons being the largest size and then on down. So that you would, if you were a senior and you were single and you wanted to have a really small bin, then at least they would reflect. Have we ever?
Councilmember Waters, I believe we offer multiple size bins. However, our current contract for collection does not differentiate based on bin size. It is a flat cost per house per month.
Okay.
But I believe we, if somebody wanted a smaller cart, they could have one, but they don't, they don't recognize any reduction in cost, no.
Yes, they are charged the same.
So again, that doesn't necessarily meet the dilemma that we face today. But like I said, we will be renegotiating next year and so maybe that's something, some of your ideas, as well as maybe container size and the cost per that, we'd be able to negotiate and talk about that next year because I think I would speak for, well, I'll speak for myself. No one wants to see anyone on a fixed income being assessed more of a fee or any more of an increase and we're trying to be cognizant of that. However, in this case, a lot of times our hands are tied. We have to make this decision. But I appreciate thinking creatively about how to address that need.
So why not go a year-by-year contract with him? Make him justify the increase.
It's up next year.
Yeah.
His contract.
After that, say you got a one-year contract, year-by-year, justify your increase.
And sometimes you won't get the best.
We want to see what you actually pay for overhead against what you want for an increase.
I hear what you're saying, but that could work both ways as well.
I understand, yes. I understand.
But let me, let me pick up on this thought that you raised, Alex. So, so could you, so there are smaller bins? I didn't realize we even had smaller containers available.
Because I have seen smaller.
There are, there are, but there is no price break for a smaller bin.
Okay, but I, I haven't thought this through, but I'm, and so I'm thinking out loud and I get in trouble and I do that every time. But why couldn't you have the smaller bin have that price, price break that's equivalent to the senior discount?
Because our contract does not allow for that. Our contract is a flat amount per household.
But it allows for the senior discount in the contract?
Yes.
So if we're substituting something that's equivalent to the senior discount, why would that not be acceptable? It's not, we're not raising it, we're not lowering it. It's the same.
I believe that'd be, have to be negotiated with Gil Halling, one, and then two, I, I don't know from a legal standpoint whether that'd be allowed. I think it would be. But that would have to be negotiated with Gil Halling.
You'd almost have to go to anyone with a senior discount and say, well, we, you have to take away your large bin and you have to use a small.
You would have to offer.
And then offer it to everyone.
Everyone. You could not.
Yeah, because you can't differentiate, yeah.
Yeah.
See, it almost sounds like to me, guys, Gil Halling has got you guys hogtied because he thinks he's the only garbage hauler in town.
No, it's, no, but we honor our contracts. I mean, that, it's a contract situation, so you've raised a lot of good.
So don't let him think, you know, he's the only route you guys could go.
I, I understand.
That's the wrong way of thinking.
But it's a contract that's in effect. You've raised a lot of good points with us. I, I don't disagree with anything you've been saying, but it's a contract that we still need to honor. I mean, I just threw out the idea that would require an amendment to the contract, but that probably won't happen, so.
Well, like I say, go a year-by-year and it's a good idea to get a smaller container because I don't use near as much garbage.
You know, it's, it's funny that you said that because I, Gil called me today talking about her garbage and she was a senior citizen. So she, her neighbor lets her take over her little bag that she's got and, and uses hers because she doesn't need garbage. Well, she doesn't, so.
And that's something we don't want to force people into, you know what I mean?
Well, of course not, but some people have to make a choice and.
Well, I, I understand. Well, while we're at it, while we're at it, I look over the years at what my garbage has been compared to what I'm recycling. My recycling is much more than my garbage today. I fill my recycling bin every week and I hope you do too and I hope others do that because that's what we need to start doing more of is recycling.
I agree.
My garbage, my garbage is way down, not simply because I'm senior, but just over the years. That's with kids and grandkids, families coming in. It's amazing what you can recycle and Melissa does a great job of sending out those reminders to us of what's acceptable and what isn't.
But you know, next time his contract's up for renewal, I'd, I'd look at it hot and heavy. Say we need to make some, we need to make, you need to give a little bit.
We, we do, we do, we will.
The money's not there. So anyway, yeah, I found out where that come from, the call, come from the auditor's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also I should clarify, I saw you sent it out in an email, but when I was speaking with Taylor about those different options, he emailed all members of council just so that you could at least see the breakdown as well.
So just think about that, you know, kind of weaning that in, you know, a limited income program and save you a lot of headaches going through court, class action, somebody mentioned.
Yeah.
You know, let's just, it could be done.
Yes.
It could be done, pretty easy, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I say, leave the government out of it and make it simple.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Voting on the.
First reading is all.
Did you have something on this item or?
No.
Okay. So voting first reading?
First reading is all. First reading passes five zero. We won't do any more readings, so we'll go to citizen concerns. Any citizen to be heard, please come forward to the mic. State your name and address, please.
My name is Dustin Rule. I live at four thirty-one Victoria Court. Basically, I'm coming to the city council, I'm probably even doing this the wrong way. I'm starting a bank and what I'm doing is I'm starting a bank based on marijuana. I know it's illegal here in Sioux City. I know it's illegal here in the state of Iowa. But what I'm coming to, to you about is I'm looking for a home for my bank. Thirty-five million people smoke marijuana in the United States and what I plan to do is set the price of marijuana and I plan to tax it. And then I plan to distribute it or collect, I'm sorry, I plan to collect the taxes on the federal end and the state end for the marijuana industry. I am also a food safety person. I work in a bakery. Therefore, I understand that marijuana is being ground up and it is being processed and it's being put into everything that you can think of from a donut to a coffee, whatever you can think of. And I plan to use my experience as a food safety person to set the regulations for marijuana. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. So basically, what I'm approaching the city council for is a possible home. I do know it's illegal here and so what I'd be possibly asking for would be a temporary permit to operate in the city of Sioux City while I am working on legalizing marijuana federally. I do plan to do that. I am planning on, and I am working on it right now. I am open to any questions. I'm nervous, so.
I have a, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Can you tell me again what your, you said a bank?
Yep.
What, what do you mean by that?
So basically, I plan to set the price of marijuana per pound. What's going on in other states is everybody has access to marijuana, so that price is dropping. I plan to hold it at a specific price and then I plan to tax it. And then I will distribute it, like I said.
The money from that or the marijuana itself?
Both. I can do both. I can distribute it, I can buy from farmers and then I can turn around and sell it to the retailers. That's how I plan to get the, the taxation. I work with what's called BRC and I plan to use those BRC regulations to say, hey, if you want a growers permit in Sioux City, Iowa, you have to be able to pass a BRC inspection. Which basically, if you go down to my bakery, and this is my expertise is, is you have to have all your papers in line. You have to have all your documentations in line. You have to make sure that your facility is clean. Another part of my food safety job is, is where do your chemicals come from? What kind of chemicals are you putting into your food? So at the same time, I plan to regulate what kind of chemicals are put into the production of your marijuana. If it is turned into a oil or any other kind of medicinal purpose, the idea is then I will go and make sure that you are following BRC guidelines. Yes, right now they are for a bakery, but I can adapt them to the marijuana industry.
Okay, so here, here, I'm going to stop you for a second.
Oh, I want to hear your question.
Okay, so here's the deal. First of all, it's illegal, so we can't, we can't even, we can't even give you a permit to do anything.
Okay, I understand that. That's why I'm coming here.
Yeah, okay, so, so what, what needs to happen is the state's got to approve pot, for one thing.
Right.
That's the first thing and, and we're going through the CBD thing right now, so.
Uh-huh.
It's, it's a process, so, you know.
I would just, yeah, recommend maybe talking out to your state officials, your state elected officials, have a conversation with them about what you'd like to do or. I know right now there's a, a bill being presented to legalize marijuana and tax it, similar to what you're talking. similar to what you're talking about, so maybe speak with that. I believe he's a representative, I forget if he's a rep or a senator, but...
All right.
I know, I know one of our senators is checking into it, but everything that you talked about, the, the state's going to have to take control of it, not you.
Right.
When it comes to taxing, when it comes to, to growth and, and everything. So after all that's said and done, then that's when you come back to us and talk to us about if you want land, and if we, if we got land that we can sell you.
Okay.
That, that type of thing, so...
Oh, I guess I do have a, just a, this is just a broad brush question. Would the city of Sioux City be willing to, if, in the long run, say it is legalized, would the city be willing to have a partner like the Bank of Marijuana?
I don't think we could partner.
Well, I mean, like, an entity like that here in Sioux City. So basically, I'm looking for a home. I'm going to build this bank no matter what. I'm either going to do it in Sioux City where I live, Nebraska, or South Dakota, those are the closest. And if nobody in these three states would like to...
Well, here's what I'll tell you. I'll tell you that if, if, I think with all of us, it would be something that we would look at, but we wouldn't even consider it until after everything gets legal and, and it's all on the ground and we've got something to work with, because right now, you're just throwing out ideas, which is great.
Right.
Fully get that, but we need something to look at.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I, I'm going to be honest, I'm square one, and that's why I come to the city, to see if even the city would even want something like this here, or if I would have to look for any...
I would, I would assume that you'll probably get the same response for any city council right now, because nothing can happen until you get it legalized, so...
That is actually one of the next steps that I'm working on. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Anyone else?
I noticed there was a, an email for a conference board meeting, meeting next week. Is that, is that for, it said public hearing, but it is for all of us?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, finalize the budget.
I didn't remember them at the last meeting, so...
Thank you, that's all I have.
Nothing.
Yeah, we got a joint meeting with Downtown Partners tomorrow. There is, on Wednesday, the thirteenth, a Sioux City Go, Sioux City Growth Organization General Meeting. If you have any young professionals working for you, or if you're a young professional yourself, I would encourage you to send, send your people there, maybe even a new hire. It's a great chance to meet people, meet people and network, so that will be at the United Way Building at seven oh one Steuben, over the lunch hour. Then the only...
I thought you said old people could come to that, too.
Hey, Dan, Dan's bed.
Dan.
And Dan's bed, and he's young, so I mean...
Why did he pick you out right away?
I don't know, and I have a lot of water to drink today.
That's Wednesday at noon?
It is, you should have hit it up. And then this, this weekend, there's lots of different events. We have the NAACP, the Freedom Fund Banquet. I don't know if tickets are still available, but if they are, I would recommend reaching out to someone. Linda Santi, I know is on the board. I contacted her. And then that will be held at the Sioux City Convention Center. There's also Stein's Vine. The, the Beer and Wine Festival will be held at Tyson. You like that?
I do, I like it.
And then, yeah, Tyson this year, first year. The other, the only other thing that I would have, and I have no idea whose department this would be, Mr. Padmore, is someone contacted me and said they were looking at the ordinance concerning sidewalks and wheeled vehicles or wheeled anything that's able to be on sidewalks, and there's an exception for wheelchairs, that says that wheelchairs can obviously go on there. She was asking about strollers. She was wondering if there should be an exception for strollers to be able to be on there. Now, I don't know if it's, they're going to say the only motorized thing can be a wheelchair or what that differentiation is.
We could look into it.
She was just asking if I'd be willing to bring it up, if there needs to be a change. Who would that be under, just so I know?
Probably between my office and legal.
Yeah. All right, I appreciate it. That's all I got.
I have a question for the mayor. You haven't declared a snow emergency.
Not today yet, but it's still early.
Okay.
I just don't want to lose the only power that you have in the city. No, haven't yet.
We'll find out in about ten minutes.
I just want to make sure, I haven't had a call from Mr. Carney, or from the police, or from Mr. Padmore yet, so I'm, I'm very proud...
Last time I looked outside, it wasn't even snowing, so...
Okay. It wasn't?
No.
That was an hour, a couple hours ago.
I'm, I'm very pleased to announce, and picking up on what Alex said, at the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet Saturday evening, we'll have, the entire council will be present for that banquet, so we're sending a clear message that that's extremely important to us. That's all I have.
Did you proofread the proclamation? Is it good to go?
I did, yeah, the dates are good.
Okay.
Spelling is correct.
I'll move with you.
Second.
Gretkin?
Hi.
For?
Oh, Valentine's Day is coming up.
Tomorrow.